It's a Phoenix map. That's how bad I am. Actually, I printed a Tucson one out like this too and it was all. They're all, like you say, there's really key themes that it's not that hard to remember what some of the people keep talking about. And some of it is, we know it's so easy to fix and we're gonna fix. Gonna keep Sedona whole. You know, I don't know which way Sedona's gonna go, but we're gonna keep Sedona whole.
Hello? Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, we're, we'll go ahead and get the meeting started. I'd like to introduce our Spanish interpreter.
Hi, good evening, my name is Gabriela Contreras, I am the Spanish interpreter, if you need assistance, please come see me. Muy buenas tardes, mi nombre es Gabriela Contreras, soy su intérprete, si necesita servicios de interpretación, por favor vengan a verme, gracias.
We'll begin the meeting with the pledge of allegiance. Everyone, if you could please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Public, for which it stands, one nation, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you for being here. I now call to order the meeting of the Independent Redistricting Commission. There is a transcriptionist who will be recording every word. Please speak slowly and clearly so we have a clear record of your input. At this time, we will introduce ourselves. My name is Shereen Lerner, I am one of the commissioners from Maricopa County.
I am David Meel, and I'm a commissioner from Pima County. Hello, I'm David Meel, I'm from Pima County.
And now what we're gonna do is go to San Carlos. Have introductions there.
And Commissioner Meel, Chairwoman Newberg is on her way, she's en route.
Okay. And do we have someone from Wickenburg? Is Commissioner Watchman?
Yes, good evening, this is Vice Chairman Derek Watchman, and good evening, everybody here in Wickenburg. I represent Apache County from Woodrook, and I'm the Democratic appointee to the commission. So, good evening, everybody.
We will now move to Agenda Item Two, which is Public Comment. And staff will read the rules.
In compliance with Arizona's open meeting law, speakers should confine their statements to the issue on the posted agenda, which is before the commission. Speakers are also requested to limit their comments to approximately two minutes. The two minutes will be strictly enforced for all speakers. Additionally, speakers are required to follow proper decorum. Speakers must use appropriate language, foul and/or abusive language will not be tolerated. Any speaker failing to follow proper decorum or any other guidelines may be asked to leave. Any breach of the peace or disruption of a commissioned public hearing may be cause of report to law enforcement. If someone has already expressed the same sentiment you wish to express, you may say so and your comments will be recorded. If you have already spoken at a previous meeting, your comments were recorded in the public record. Opposing viewpoints may be expressed by the citizens present. As a courtesy, citizens are reminded to address their comments to the chair and the commission, and not to the audience present. Please show respect for all speakers and avoid personal comments. Remember, the commission must hear all sides of an issue to make an informed decision. We will now begin public comment. We'll have our first five speakers line up behind me. We've got Senator Rick Gray, Linda Bussum, David Marsh, Bonnie Angster.
Thank you, I am Senator Rick Gray from LD 21, which includes Sun City, the community that we're in, for clear disclosure, and I'm also a Sun City resident. So first, I want to thank the commission for maintaining that community of interest. The original maps had Sun City split in half, which was not good for us at all. That was brought back together, so I want to applaud you for that. I do want to say, though, in, when we're looking at the congressional district, I have deep concerns about our community of interest when we look at what's in. And my view is, we should move CD eight farther west, because we are now going to be at the west side in my district, and Surprise is going to be actually in a rural CD, which I don't think is appropriate. We're an urban community. We also have dynamics when it comes to, I've got a, we've pulled together a West Valley caucus, because we're looking at the transportation tax, and we're kind of wrestling with the East Valley. There's strong community of interests over here, and when we actually lose part of that, because we're in a different congressional district, it undermines us. So I think that having CD eight extended to include Surprise, that keeps us more as a CD that is an urban CD, rather than just a small part, and that's my concern, is we, if we're a small part and we've got all this rural area, we can actually use, lose our voice, and what should be a priority for us then becomes a lack of focus. And so, my, again, I want to, I want to thank you for focusing on the constitutional requirements highlighted by community of interests, and I would urge you to look at that in light of the current CDs too, and re-proportion CD eight to go farther west and include Surprise. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Linda Bussum, and I'm a resident of Peoria in zip code 85345, and currently redistricted into LD 27. Peoria, Sun City, Surprise, El Mirage are my communities of interest. It's where my family lives, it's where I shop, receive medical care, socialize, and go to church. I choose to live here because I love my diverse community, what it has to offer, and I'm particularly interested in our K through 12 school system, which are essential to the future of our children. Wesmech offers DICEART and Peoria High School students a last, a fast track forward to career and technical education courses that unifies our schools. The mayors and city council members of these towns work together to achieve desired goals and solutions, and we share the same problems and interests. The suburban West Valley has no connection with the urban city of Phoenix, and/or rural La Paz or Mojave Counties, nor does Maricopa County share anything in common with Arizona's surrounding counties, and these boundaries should never be intermingled. Please draw CD eight to include Peoria, El Mirage, Surprise, and all of the Sun Cities, as they share Peoria and DICEART school districts. Please move the urban Central Phoenix into CD three, where they'll, where they share commonality and can be fairly represented. LD 27 should include Sun City, because parts of it are also in this Peoria School District. Currently, Peoria and Surprise are broken up into different districts, where they should remain intact. Following the Arizona Constitution should be the commission's only focus, instead of seeking party competitiveness, like they did 10 years ago. It was not fair to the people of Arizona, nor were we fairly represented. The Arizona Constitution, Article Four, Part Two, Section One, states that, one, Arizona must comply with the federal, okay, well, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David Marsh, my wife and I are Christian and retired. We lived in LD 15 and CD eight prior to moving to our current Lennar 55-plus community, North Surprise. We both volunteer at Luke Air Force Base. There are supposed to be 1,500 homes in our 55-plus community in seven years. Our Linnier precinct at the western edge of the district, with a lot of emphasis on the eastern part of the LD, we've experienced what it's like to have different common interests and priorities. According to the current LD 28 precinct map, we would be grouped with people from the rural, western, and northern parts of Maricopa County. The needs and wants in common with these sections of the LD would be different. We have more in common and shop with those in LD 29, which includes most of the city's Surprise. The other thing is that the LD meeting may be far from us. We'd be assigned to Congressional District Nine, which is about seven miles west of District Eight. We would again experience being at the edge of a very mixed district. The commonalities of us living in suburban Surprise and concurrently in, are currently in CD eight are different than those in the Gladden and surrounding rural areas of Maricopa County. Similar interests and shopping are done with those in CD eight. In both cases, we are suburban versus rural dwellers. Would like to see the suburban West Valley kept in one congressional district, as we have more cohesive interests than differences. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. My name is Bonnie Angster, a resident of Sun City for 27 years. There seems to be a serious concern for the boundaries that are proposed for LD 29. It appears that we would be better off if we moved to 27, LD 27, which would include Sun City. Focusing on communities, Sun Cityans have a tendency and prone to do the business in Peoria and the Arrowhead area. This includes shopping, entertainment, sporting events, restaurants, and importantly, medical facilities. Rather than placing Sun City as far as west as proposed, it would fit the common interest of the district needs. These are the boundaries that I propose. 67 Avenue for the east boundary, including a majority of Peoria. Then using Northern Avenue for the southern boundary, DICEART Road for the western border, and Lake Pleasant Parkway for the northern border, keeping Sun City and the surrounding areas, suburbs, in a compact district. Now concerning CD eight, to be more practical, the district needs to include Peoria, Sun City, Youngtown, El Mirage, Surprise, Sun City West, and the possibility of all the way to Sun City Festival. Not dividing the Sun Cities, uniting the West Valley, including the many retirement communities herein. As the IRC is focused on common interest of unified communities, these are my recommendations. I thank you for this opportunity.
Our next speakers are Mitch Friedlander, Howard Clemmer, Lynn Peters, Roy Jenks, Margaret Pop, and Sheila Roberts.
Hi, my name is Mitch Friedlander. I live in Sun City Grand, which is part of Surprise. Previously, I've submitted written testimony on my objection to previous maps, and I'm still going to talk about the same changes or lack of changes that you've made. I moved to Arizona in 2010, when I retired in 2015. We moved to a 55-plus community, and when you split Sun City and you split the other adult communities and took them away from our district, it made it seem as it was impossible to be cohesive, to be a unit for similar interest and groups. We are retired, we are all on, most of us on fixed incomes, and we, in Surprise and in Grand, there are approximately 9,700 homes, and there are about 20,000 residents. When you move us into CD nine, you don't have that kind of population. It's totally rural, we're farming, and we have no common interest with anything from Mojave, La Paz, Yuma, except for Maricopa County. And again, if you would move CD eight slightly to the west, where we used to be, and take us out of CD nine, it would be more appropriate for everybody living within that community. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Howard Clemmer. I live in Surprise, actually in Sun City Grand. I've lived there for 16 years. Everybody has said what I would like to say, so I feel cheated. But thank you anyway. And thank you for letting me have an opportunity to say something. I do believe in the CDs, that's 29 and 27, probably would be better amalgamated, share our common sense of interest. And in CD, I agree with my previous speaker, Mitch, that moving Surprise and other surrounding communities back into CD eight would be a benefit to the people of Surprise. Thank you.
We want to, we want to acknowledge that many of you might have similar things to say. We don't want to discourage you from speaking on your own, but if you do, you can do, just as we just heard, which is acknowledge that you agree with previous speakers on those points. And instead of, I know you may have a long speech, I'm not saying not to do the speech, but if you choose, you can also just tell us that you agree with those previous comments, and we will record that.
Good evening, thank you for letting me speak. I have a raspy voice, so I hope that you can understand what I'm saying.
My name is Lieutenant Colonel Roy Jenks, US Army retired. I live in Sun City West, and we've lived there since 2000. 25-year military veteran, who chose to retire in Arizona, in Sun City West. Been a member of the American Legion, Reserve Officers Association, since my retirement in 1958. So I figure this is probably the only time I'm gonna get a chance to address a commission like this, because it'll make me a little too old, I think, to make it to the next one. We decided to retire in Sun City West because of the close proximity, one of the reasons, to Luke Air Base. We have access to base pharmacy, medical services, and some people don't realize, but Arizona is a top location for military retirement in the entire community, country. In fact, there are five Arizona military retirement locations in the top 100 cities in the country. And this was kind of news to me also. Scottsdale, Arizona is ranked third in the nation, as far as preferability. Military veterans like the area around Luke for employment, both active duty and military, retired military. The current legislative boundaries have really proven very worthwhile for the military, and the military families and friends have been very appreciative. Yep. It would, I'd be wrong to diverse any boundaries, in my opinion. And military retirees have served the country for many years and would like to feel their selection of Arizona and their retirement home carefully. Okay, I would just like to thank you, and God bless your work and your decisions that you're gonna make. Thank you.
Hello, and thank you. My name is Margaret Pop, and I live in Sun City West, and that is a 55-plus community, and we are surrounded with veterans, a lot of retired folks. So the draft for Luke Air Force Base to the south, and all the areas in between, all the adult communities, they should really try to keep them all together, and in CD eight, and it's just a matter of like interests. I changed up my, my speech here a little bit, but just having the opportunity to be able to, that's why all the retirees, the snowbirds, and everybody moved down here, because of the atmosphere of the West Valley corridor. So anyway, I do thank you very much, and I look forward to 2022.
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to share my concerns about draft map CD nine. And yes, I agree with most of the previous comments about CD nine, but I'd like to share mine. My name is Lynn Peters, and I have lived in the city of Surprise for 21 years. During that time, I have never had an Arizona state legislator representative or federal congressman that shared my values, never. My biggest concern with draft map CD nine is that it does not meet several of the constitutional requirements. CD nine is far from compact. The Maricopa County portion of CD nine shoots off from a mostly rectangular shape, simply because the western edge of Arizona does not meet the population requirements of a congressional district. Adding Maricopa communities to CD nine, simply to meet population requirements for communities of other counties, violates the intent of communities of interest criteria of Proposition 106. CD nine is solidly uncompetitive. CD nine includes four diverse counties, Mojave, La Paz, Maricopa, and Yuma. I didn't even know there was a La Paz County. CD nine is geographically mostly rural, while communities of Surprise, Sun City West, El Mirage, and Ledgefield Park are urban and densely populated. Our issues and interests are dramatically different from rural cities and towns. We do not relate to Lake Havasu City, Kingman, Bullhead City, Lake Mead, and Quartzsite, or the Colorado River Indian Reservation, all grouped with Maricopa County metro Phoenix communities. When CD two cuts into CD nine in the north, it is for a Native American community of interest. When CD two cuts into Pinal County, I agree, it is for another Native American community of interest. However, when CD nine cuts into Maricopa County, there is no community of interest, so it's really very illogical. You spend a great deal of time focusing on southern Arizona and the Tucson area. I hope that you will take the same consideration for the northwest metro Phoenix communities. Commissioners, thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Sheila Roberts, I live in Glendale, 85308. Since this is my first time testifying, I simply just wanted to voice my opinion on how common interests and cohesiveness of my community seems to be more authentic, inclusive, and has a positive outcome, versus being competitive, which seems to me to be divisive and kind of self-serving, so, thank you.
Thank you, we'll now go to Wickenburg with Marie and Vice Chair Watchman. Thank you, good evening from Wickenburg. Before we start, I'd like to introduce our Spanish interpreter, who's available to anybody who may need assistance, please come up, Brenda.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Brenda Lopez, if you need a Spanish interpreter, I am present here. Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Brenda Lopez, si necesita intérprete de español, aquí estoy presente, gracias.
We have four speakers in Wickenburg, and just to remind the speakers, since the video was interrupted, you have two minutes to speak, and I have a timer. Our first speaker will be Yavapai County Supervisor Harry Oberg. The second speaker will be Noel Rosen. The third speaker will be Joanne Pierce, and then our final speaker will be Kate McCuskey.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Harry Oberg, and I'm a Yavapai County Supervisor. I would like to provide comments in support of map CD 0068, which revises your draft CD map. Map 68 is superior, and that seeks to establish rural congressional districts that are borderline our various communities of interest. Your CD map combines Yavapai County with the eastern counties of Navajo and Apache, and portions of Pinal and Graham Counties. Yavapai County has longstanding communities of interest related to our western culture and heritage of ranching, mining, agriculture, and forestry. Coupled with our rural lifestyle and fierce protection of our scarce water resources, combining our rural county with Apache and Navajo Counties would result in diminishing our communities of interest. Yavapai County has few common interests with the eastern and southern counties. They don't have the same water issues that we do in the high desert areas of north central and western Arizona. The tribal areas of the east and south have superior water rights in Arizona. Our communities of interest lie more naturally with the rural counties of Coconino, Hila, Mojave, and La Paz, which have similar scarce water resources. Map 68 provides that these counties be combined with Yavapai and the one CD, and the entire town of, the town of Wickenburg align with CD two and LD five. But map 68 does not fix one area just to break another. Rather, this map also proposes that the eastern and southern counties have common communities of interest that align better with one another, and should comprise their own CD. Combining these eastern counties naturally establishes a minority-majority district, which would provide congressional representation specifically attuned to unique Native American interests. Needless to say, we see water as primary in redistricting consideration, since it is a common and urgent community of interest in much of Arizona. We hope that you will take water into consideration in drafting your final maps. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Noel Rosen, I am here in the town of Wickenburg, I live here in the town of Wickenburg. And I've testified before the commission several times that Wickenburg, as a whole town, needs to be in LD five and CD two. We don't have anything in common with, with any of the areas that are in LD 28 and the CD nine maps. We're a western town, so we've got a lot in common with our neighbors to the north. Now, what people don't know about Wickenburg is that dirt around the area of Wickenburg Ranch that was the next into the town of Wickenburg. This is the reason why we need to all stay together as one whole town. I realize that we are, that we are split by two counties. But the Maricopa County side of Wickenburg wants to be in LD five and CD two, which is where we feel we're going to have the best representation. We have a lot in common with Congress. We have a lot in common with the areas like North Ranch and, and other areas in, in Yavapai County. We've got roping, we've got rodeo, we've got the western look and the western lifestyle. We also have a little bit of mining as well. This is why it's so important, as I've stated several times, that we need to be in LD five and CD two. I'm hoping that the commission will, more or less, will have the stamp on that. Because you focused on other areas and you've completely left out Wickenburg in the mix of key, of areas of key interest. Those, like I said, we don't have anything in common with, with the LD 28 and CD nine maps. We're not properly represented there. So I hope that the commission- So I hope that the Commission will take my testimony under consideration and like I said, as I've said many times, put us in LD five and CD two. Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Joanne Pierce and I reside here at Wickenburg Ranch. I've testified twice before, once in Congress and in Scottsdale. As before, I urge you to keep Wickenburg Ranch in LD five as before. I also urge you to unify Wickenburg Town into Wickenburg Ranch and keep us both in LD five, Yavapai. We are clearly a small town, no big box, no big population. We are western in flavor, enjoying all things rodeo and ranching. We're nothing in common with Phoenix proper Maricopa County. We live, work, play, shop locally and medical here as well. We actively participate in all things cowboy, just as Prescott and surrounding towns. We are town people, not big city folks. For the third time, I'm urging you to hear me and unify Wickenburg Ranch and the town of Wickenburg into LD five and CD two. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Kate McCusker. And to be honest with you, I'm not exactly sure how these maps work. Do you want me to repeat? I'm Kate McCusker and I'll be honest, I'm not really sure exactly where these lines are drawn on the map. I'm confused by looking at these four pieces of paper. However, I want to say this. I've lived here for 21 years, have visited the community since 1992, prior to living here. And I have to disagree with the Wickenburg Ranch resident who just spoke. Wickenburg is an ex-urban community. We are 30 to 35 miles from Surprise. Yes, we have become a roping capital. Yes, we are a western town. But we have nothing in common with the far west part of Arizona. So although I don't understand the maps completely, what I do understand is that the way the lines are currently drawn, where we are represented by a congressman out of Kingman, really does not relate to us at all. We relate, yes, to Wickenburg Ranch, a little bit to Prescott, a lot to the West Valley. And I think it's very important for you to consider, no matter what these maps say, we don't really fit with the far western part of the state at all. And this has been a common feeling among residents, people I've known, people I work with. I worked for the town of Wickenburg for the last 20 years. So it would be great if you could do something about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the speakers from Wickenburg. We will now go to Michelle in San Carlos.
Give an opportunity to our chairwoman to introduce herself.
Hello, hello, everyone. It's wonderful to be here. I am Chairwoman Newburg. I live in Chandler. And thank you, everybody, for participating and thank you, colleagues, for joining us this evening as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And then I'd also like our Apache translator to come up and introduce himself.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bartholomew Sisto. I'm an interpreter for Apache. Good evening.
Madam Chair and members of the Commission and the listening audience, we have four speakers here in San Carlos. And just to remind the speakers, you do have two minutes and I will be timing. The first speaker is Mr. Steve Titler. Next speaker is Cody Gaisen-Gusian and then Bernadette Niffen and Anthony Rihardo.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good thing he said, it's good to be here and it's good for you guys to come and visit our reservation once in a while.
I have a letter from the chairman. He couldn't be here. I know that two minutes is ticking along, so let me try to read it fast. Chairman had planned on being here, but he was, had to go to Phoenix on emergency. So this is from San Carlos Apache Tribe, which I'll give to you after I read it. He says, Honorable Dr. Rica Newburg, the Honorable Derek Watchman, the Honorable David Mead, the Honorable Dr. Shereen Lerner, the Honorable Douglas York, Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission, Dear Chairman Newburg, Vice Chairman Watchman and Commissioners, on behalf of the 17,000 members of San Carlos Apache Tribe, thank you for the opportunity to host this important event and to provide comments on about the draft redistricting maps. In response, please accept this letter as a tribe's public comment as it pertains to the community of interest that makes up the currently proposed legislative District Six and Congressional District Two as set forth in Legislative Test Map Version 10.0 and Congressional Test Map Version 7.1 respectively. Briefly, the tribe believes that any proposal to revise district boundaries from the prior redistricting cycle by fractionating the existing community of interest shared among the seven tribes and their homelands will have an adverse impact by diluting their current voting strength. Moreover, revising district boundaries could splinter and dilute the community of interests shared among tribes and tribal members who live off reservation in nearby cities and towns. Therefore, it is absolutely imperative that the Commission maintains a robust Native American majority-minority legislative district capable of electing its preferred candidate into office. Recall that the San Carlos Apache Tribe's reservation is a community of interest. The San Carlos Apache Tribe is a community of interest with the White Mountain Apache Tribe and the Navajo Nation and other rural tribes in northeastern and northwestern Arizona. We share a common language with the White Mountain Apaches and similar language to the Navajos. Navajos and Apaches live in nearby border towns such as the towns along Interstate 40, Cholo, Pine Top and Springerville, so they should not be excluded from the proposed Legislative District Six. Moreover, we continue to have concerns about the inclusion of Flagstaff in the proposed Legislative District Six as discussed below. Under the Voting Rights Act, our tribal members are entitled to a district that gives us the opportunity to elect candidates of our choice. If the Commission were to include Flagstaff in Legislative District Six, it could prevent us from electing candidates of choice into the legislature. In 2004, Native American voters were unable to elect their candidate of choice in the only Native American majority-minority district in the state because Flagstaff voters mobilized to defeat the Native American majority-minority district. When the district was redrawn in 2010, LD seven, the Native American majority-minority district excluded Flagstaff. Flagstaff has grown by over 18% since the last census, a much higher rate than any of the off-reservation border towns in northern Arizona. This means that Native Americans will likely lose the majority during the decade and further be impacted from electing candidates of choice if the Commission adopts a final legislative map that includes the city of Flagstaff. Further, Native Americans are the most underpopulated race in the census. Arizona is ranked number one in the U.S. with the highest number of American Indians and Alaska natives living in hard-to-count census tracts, with 68.1% of the state's native population living in hard-to-count areas. Poverty, lack of broadband service, housing insecurity, language barriers, and the COVID-19 pandemic further increases the risk that the 2020 census undercounted Arizona's Native American population. The Voting Rights Act instructs the Independent Redistricting Commission to use its lawful discretion to protect the interests of the only Native American majority-minority legislative district in Arizona. The Commission should deviate greater from the target population due to this undercount in order to create a strong Native American majority-minority district. Finally, the U.S. Supreme Court has affirmed that total population deviations of 10% or less are presumptively constitutional and population deviations greater than 10% may be justified by legitimate state interests, such as preserving a strong Native American majority-minority legislative district. The exclusion of the city of Flagstaff would achieve this legitimate state interest. As we say in our Apache language, for the opportunity to provide comments during this public hearing and for allowing the tribe to host this important meeting. Thank you. Name's Steve Titler, by the way, for the record, San Carlos Apache member.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to voice my concerns regarding Congressional District Two and Legislative District Six. My name is Cody Gassion, proud San Carlos Apache tribal member. I'd like to agree with Steve Titler and agree with his previous comments. I'd also like to add, any change made to the Congressional District Two maps lowers and dilutes the voting strength for Native American communities. We need a strong Native American majority-minority district for congressional and legislative voting purposes. Please take this into consideration. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bernadette Niffen from San Carlos, Arizona. I'm a tribal member, born and raised here. I agree with Steve Titler as well and also Cody Gassion with our tribe on honoring the District Six map. It would put us with our Native American brothers and sisters. We have like interests, like goals. I believe that would really give us an advantage in the future. So likewise, on behalf of 17,000 tribal members, I agree with the District Six map. Thank you. Have a good day.
Hello, my name is Anthony Raharano. I'm from Safford. I spoke at the previous Safford meeting. This is the closest one, so I'm just here to just give concerns about what I believe my proposed congressional and legislative districts are, which would be six and 19 respectively. Especially because, well, I will just use the little arm that looks like it's coming from Congressional District Six. That looks like pretty much a travel plan to Phoenix through Tucson, which is a, well, I'll just say that's specifically, that's a trip I've never gone on before. As opposed to here, San Carlos, my family, well, I've only been on that trip once in my 25 years. My family comes through Vilas and San Carlos Globe all the way to Phoenix multiple times a year. And in fact, we, my family made this trip, a chance to go visit the casino. So it's a, this, so I believe that, and I live in Thatcher in Safford, so I believe that is an example of the stronger community ties that where I live and this area and in the area surrounding here versus Sierra Vista versus the many very, I don't want to say barren, because it's a love, everyone lives in a lovely place. But that route down there and all the way down to the border, which I've only been once on school trips where they show us places that we don't normally see. We don't normally see this border, which is why I don't believe it's that strong community interest. The same things apply almost to the legislative district stretching into Santa Cruz County. Again, I've only been there on school trips. And yeah, I didn't really have the current remarks, but thank you so much.
That concludes our speakers for San Carlos. I'll send it back over to Sun City.
Thank you, Michelle. Our next five speakers are Claire Van Stoney, sorry about that, Thomas Kiefer, Richard Newcomer, Frank Rizzo and Timothy Schwartz.
Oh, that's all right. They've been doing it to me for years, ever since I was a child. It's gotten worse. Anyway, good evening. My name's Claire Van Steenweig. First of all, I want to thank the Commission for listening to the people from the Surprise meeting when we came and pleaded with you to unify Sun City once again. Secondly, the statement about following the U.S. Constitution and the Voters Rights Act, I don't know how many people are aware of it, but many parts of all the Voters Rights Acts have been challenged in the Supreme Court and many parts of them have been ruled unconstitutional. So I'd really like a definition on what parts you do follow so I can understand how it works. LD 25 will not serve the West Valley at all. CD eight properly right now goes all over this and that's another part of this whole discussion. CD eight from 67th, say, north of, to the north end of where it is now, as long as it's west of the 17 would be nice and all the way down to the 10, not past it. As the representative we presently have has gone to a good deal of trouble to set up a West Valley office so that the seniors and the veterans and others can go visit it very easily. I lived in Sun City Festival after the last departure from reality and I never saw the representative from Kingman. And I know Paul and had invited him out there to speak at different meetings. They never had the time to come there. And I can understand why when you look at a roadmap. Professionally, I used to handle logistics and demographics for food companies in California and across the country. And this one makes no sense at all. If you were a UPS driver, you'd probably quit. Secondly, I'd like to see LD 29 stay the way it is right now with the exception of possibly getting back the districts just, I guess, northeast off Grand Avenue at 163rd. Oh, boy. That's time's up already. Anyway, that's what I hope you do. I'd like to see CD eight retained a little more of what it has. Don't go below the 10. Don't go beyond where it is east or west. But please don't put us out in the desert. It's hot enough.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Thomas Kiefer. I live in LD 30 and I've lived there since 1967. Anyways, I was just hoping that maybe when you do redistricting that you'll form the boundaries in a little more rational way. Because right now, the boundary goes from 19th Avenue over to 27th Avenue. And so when you're walking a precinct, walking down the streets, you get to the freeway and then you have to walk all the way down to Bethany and around for a little strip on the other side of the freeway from the freeway to 27th Avenue. Just, it's not hardly worth doing. But anyways, it would make more sense for that strip to be part of the larger district to the west of the freeway. So anyways, and I don't know why they split that off to stick it with the LD on the other side of the freeway. It doesn't make sense. But anyways, it'd be much more practical to do it that way. Thank you.
Say again, what district?
LD 30. LD 30.
30.
That's the one you're, the old district, right?
Okay, I currently live on, near 27th Avenue in Bethany. If you look at the district, there's boundaries on 27th Avenue. So between 27th Avenue and the freeway, there's just a little strip. There's mostly like a food city, there's apartments, St. Simon Duke Cathedral. So it's just like a small strip. It doesn't make sense to attach it to the other side of the freeway. Thank you.
I am Richard Newcomer. I live in Goodyear. I live in the area called Australia Mountain Ranch. We're part of Goodyear. Our interests are with the city of Goodyear. But our LD fours is spread out between Yuma and Tucson, which it doesn't make any sense at all. We're like the little finger area up between parts of Goodyear and Buckeye on our west and whatnot. But it really needs to draw the line so that our interests are protected and don't pull us out and put us in with remote areas that have no connection to us other than the fact that they live in Arizona like we do, you know? I mean, it just, it's absolutely ridiculous. And even then, our congressional district, that you did that so poorly that they have, one party has a stronghold and we got nothing. And then the other way in Yuma, they join with Tucson somehow, and I don't know how they do that, but we're two hours away from Yuma or another two hours away from Tucson. And that's driving pretty good, too, like 75, 80 miles an hour. I mean, but come on, it just doesn't, it doesn't make practical sense. Thank you for the time to speak.
Good evening. I live inside the area currently known as LD 30, which will become LD 26. Thank you for all the work that's been done on the maps. I see a vast improvement. There is, however, one area that I believe still needs attention. Several of the precincts in LD 30 are split in half by the I-17 freeway. That's always been a sore spot, and that's not been corrected with the new maps. The Black Canyon Freeway is a natural boundary. Our new legislative district should be west of the freeway, and the little small strip that's on the east side of the freeway should be included in the other district that's east of the freeway. Once again, the freeway is a natural boundary and truly divides. I believe communities of interest have been affected by this boundary and should not be forced, those people should not be forced to ask why they are separated from the larger group which is on the west side of the boundary. Finally, CD three needs to include Glendale and the areas of Alhambra and Encantle. These are central Phoenix neighborhoods, and they belong in the central Phoenix district. They do not belong with North Phoenix or Scottsdale. Thank you for addressing these two very important issues.
Timothy Schwartz.
Good evening. My name is Frank Rizzo, and I live currently in LD 22, which will be LD 29, and Congressional District Eight, which will be Congressional District Nine. And I'm really disappointed. I've lived in Arizona three times in my long life, and I've lived here in areas of interest at my time of life. Since 1995, I've lived here this last 25 years in four locations. I was in Awatuki with children, in Carefree as a middle-class executive, up in Anthem nearing my senior years, and then moved to Surprise in 2014 to retire. And by doing this now, we're splitting us apart. The Sun Cities need to be at least cohesive. And there's many veterans in Sun City Grand, Sun City West, and Sun City who have a lot in common with Luke Air Force Base. So we're being torn apart there. And then we've stuck Festival out to the left, and they're part of Buckeye, but their common interest is also included in Sun City Grand and Surprise. They have to come into town to shop and to worship, to eat, because there's not much as far as amenities out there. But now they're forced to be going down to Buckeye. In fact, that's where their hospitalization is. My medical needs with chronic diseases that I have are tied to Sun City West with the medical facilities here. So I believe that we need to stay intact with the Sun Cities and with the south of Surprise, with the surrounding communities. And CD eight needs to be pushed out to the east, to the west. Thank you.
Folks, when you come up to the podium, please make sure you state your name for the transcriptionist. Thank you. Our next five speakers are Doris Hinton, Robert Thomas, Louise Huber, Sherry Tomlinson, and Linda McNamara.
My name is Doris Hinton, and I'm a retired active adult who recently moved to the rapidly growing southwest corner of Surprise and proposed LD 29. We moved from nearby Vistancia to be much closer to where we play at the Surprise pickleball courts, rec facilities, and the White Tank Mountain Park. It is also much closer to shopping, restaurants, and the Sun City West medical facilities that we frequent. As you know, this area is a robust mixture of retired seniors, snowbirds, and young families who all seem to thrive together along the Bell Road corridor. I believe that we all moved here because of the suburban way of life, plus the proximity to Phoenix and Scottsdale culture, as well as nearby recreation and an outdoor lifestyle. We did not move here because of the way that our neighbors might vote, and so moving district lines to change the outcome of legislating voting districts in the name of competitiveness would create false barriers in what would otherwise be a natural order. I do echo the comments that so many have made prior to me about the Congressional District. Surprise is one of the biggest and fastest-growing areas of the entire state, and to put it into Congressional District Nine, which is largely rural, would be a mistake for our area of interest and our representation. It would be much more appropriate if the current Congressional District Eight boundaries, which incorporates Surprise, Sun City Festival, out west on Bell Road, and the newer communities down toward the Air Force Base are incorporated still in District Eight. Thank you very much.
My name's Robert Thomas. I'm a precinct committee man in LD 30. And in the interest of brevity, I'd like to just say I agree with the previous members from LD 30. That I-17 absolutely should be a boundary and not split. It's, that's basically all I need to say. Thank you.
The current, the new LD 29?
Exactly.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Louise Huber. I'm from LD 30 as well, and just would like to echo the comments of Mr. Schwartz and Mr. Thomas that those precincts should not be split up. It's very awkward. Also, that the north-central Phoenix area be included with south Glendale because they have very common interests. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Linda McNamara, and I am from Sun City, and I agree with Speaker Lynn Peters.
Wait, can you, I'm sorry, ma'am. Can you just at least give like one sentence or two sentences? So we've heard a lot of speakers. I don't know Lynn Peters. Just one or two sentences to remind us. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tucson isn't everybody.
Good evening. My name is Sherry Tomlinson, and I reside in the city of Peoria, and I currently reside in Legislative District 22. With the proposed maps, I would be moving to Legislative District 28. Thank you for the opportunity to provide public comment tonight. I want to thank the commissioners for sharing the Princeton Jeremandering Project report for Arizona. My five comments and recommendations will be addressing how we can improve Arizona's grade C in geographic features and competitiveness. Please consider making the following changes. One, move Wickenburg out of District 28 because the travel corridor for business is more aligned with Highway 60 than Highway 74. Two, keep Westbrook Village a retirement community in one district. I urge the commissioner to place Westbrook and Rimrock precincts and census tracts in one district. Three, combine the city of El Mirage, Young Town, and Surprise in one district. My concerns regarding competitiveness are as follows. Currently, LD 22 is not competitive at 26% voter spread, which is based on the 2020 election data. If the current draft maps are adopted as is, LD 28 would be at 30.1% voter spread, even less competitive than the current voter spread. In addition, LD 27 and 29 would be at 13.1% and 17.3% prospectively, obviously not competitive. The last point is as for the new congressional districts, four of the nine CDs are competitive with two leaning Democrat and two leaning Republican. Five of the nine congressional districts are not competitive with three congressional districts favoring Republicans and two favoring Democrats. Based on my understanding of the draft maps, the majority of the districts are not competitive, effectively guaranteeing victories to members of only one party in many districts. I urge the commission to continue to work on improving Arizona's competitiveness and align geographic features to ensure fair maps. Thank you.
Our next five speakers are Carol Ayot, James Miller, Eric Morgan, Heather Morgan, and Susan Black.
Good evening. My name is Carol Ayot, and I've been a resident of Maricopa County for the last 34 years. And I want districts which represent communities of interest so they may be effectively represented by our elected officials. Many of us at this meeting are retired and use the services such as medical, worship, entertainment, shopping, in a 10- to 15-mile radius of our community. Arrowhead Ranch, Arrowhead Lakes, Sun City, Sun City West, Surprise, and Peoria, specifically Peoria above Northern Avenue, should be in Congressional District Eight. Downtown Glendale should be moved back to Congressional District Three. The boundary line for Congressional District Eight should be moved back to I-17. And I should have stated that I'm currently in LD 22. With the new maps, I'll be moved to LD 27. Earlier, Bonnie, I think her last name was Anixter, she was a fifth speaker. She was very specific in the details for LD 27 and CD eight with the boundaries, and I just want to state that I'm in agreement with those. And my last statement is I would like to request that you please draw your maps for our congressional districts and our legislative districts compactly and always keep our communities' best interest at heart. Thank you.
Yes, I'm afraid I'm going to plow through some of the same ground we've already done, but I think at this point it's largely unavailable to have to do that. My name is James Miller. I live in Peoria, Maricopa County. I'm currently in Legislative District 22. And I'm here today to give some information about the communities of interest which are important to me and to my family. I live in Trilogy at Vistancia. So far, I think I'm the sole representative for that community, hopefully not the only. It's an age-restricted community made up of mostly retired, but still quite active people. And Trilogy is very similar to the other communities in the general area such as Cordabella, Sun City West, Sun City, Surprise Grand, Sun City Grand, and so on. We usually gather, we gather much to support local restaurants, arts and entertainment venues, as well as the many clubs and groups focusing on a variety of things. In Trilogy, we very often avail ourselves of opportunities and interest in the other age-restricted communities near ours. Our interests and activities and general attitudes are often quite similar because we chose places like these to live for a reason, and we would like for them to remain to the extent possible as they were when we moved there. Please keep our retirement communities in the Northwest Valley in a single congressional district. I understand. I understand the constitutional requirements for redistricting and how difficult your job must be to satisfy them, if it's even possible to do so. I would ask that as much weight be given to satisfying geographic compactness, contiguousness, the respecting of communities of interest, and the use of visible features and boundaries to the, as much as to equal population and certainly district competitiveness. These two latter requirements will eventually satisfy themselves anyway with the natural in-and-out movements within the district anyway. Thank you for your time today and for your efforts in this once-in-a-decade exercise.
Hi, my name is Eric Morgan. I'm an engineer at Intel Corporation in Chandler, but I live in north Glendale. I've attended a couple hearings now, and I hear a lot of people talking about competitive districts. I mean, why not? We've grown up believing that 50-50 is fair, right? But when you're talking representation, 50-50 is not fair. 50-50 is the way you guarantee that the most number of people dislike any given decision. Many people, many people are calling for competitive districts to have someone fight for their school funding and other specific things, but competitive districts don't do that. The representatives can never take a stand. They can never fight for anyone. They always have to take a weak, middle-of-the-ground, middle-of-the-road position that they think won't upset anyone. And in the end, neither constituency is ever happy with their decisions. Either that, or they have to choose between the interests of two differing parties. And that's not really fair to anyone. When we were shopping for our homes, we check our schools, our businesses, churches, how many kids are around, even interview neighbors to choose a spot that fits us. Splitting us up and dividing our representation on purpose is not fair. I'm in District 27, and quite simply, it's just too far east. There are two distinct communities in this district. A younger crew east of 59th Avenue, interested in fighting for those schools, while the west, a retiring community, is worried about living on a fixed income. They hold opposite positions on property taxes, for example. How is a representative supposed to deal with that? Instead of pitting us against each other in the same districts, give us two separate representatives who understand us and whose job it is to work out these differences. Sliding 27 to the west to encompass parts of Sun City accomplishes that. Incorporating Surprise and the surrounding areas into CD eight has similar effects for the congressional districts. You cannot force a district to be competitive without being political, and that's not really fair to the commission to be put in a position to have to make political calls like that. By selecting districts based on the interests of their citizens who have already chosen where they want to live, it's all about people and not politics. I humbly ask you to put people in front of politics. Thank you.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank each of you for the work you're doing on this commission and opportunity for myself and others to address the commission on behalf of our communities. My name is Heather Morgan. I've been a resident of my community since 1994. In that time, we've watched our community age, and our three children and their neighborhood friends leave to start their own lives. These days, we have much more in common with the neighborhood just west of us, Sun City. Our concerns and goals are much more aligned. We have reached that point in our life where we are concerned with things like living on a fixed income, not having outrageous taxes to pay for things we don't need nor will we use, and also medical care geared to the issues of growing older. Already, we spend more of our time west of us, even all the way out to Surprise, and never really do anything in the communities to our east except go around them on the 101. The community just to our east is inhabited by a much younger generation who are in earlier stages of their life, many just starting families and careers. The concerns of this younger generation is at odds with our concerns as their concerns will be more centered on schools, parks, activities for children. will be more centered on schools, parks, activities for children, and job opportunities, for example. I would also like to point out that Surprise has nothing in common with the far west side of rural Arizona, and is an urban community much more in line with the area south of it. I guess a suburban community. I put that wrong. Given these differences, I would ask that our community be shifted into the same district as Sun City and Surprise, and be shifted into the district south of it. It just makes more sense and aligns better those communities with common interests, thus allowing all those communities to be better represented by their elected officials. The goal should be to make sure that the most people we can are represented as best we can in the most compact districts possible so that they can best work together for the good of their community. I thank you for taking my testimony into consideration in deciding the outcome of the maps. Thank you.
My name is Susan Black, and I want to thank the Commission here for all of your hard work and diligence. I'm a 12-year-old, 12-year resident and business owner in the Sun City area. I'm also a rail tour, and see various demographics throughout the West Valley and the Metro Valley areas, and also the rural communities. I'm a precinct committeeman in LD 22 currently. I'm committed to impart and create strong communities. It is important to recognize the differences in retirement communities and the metro-suburban family communities versus rural communities. Our legislative districts are where our retired folks live, play, worship, entertain, and receive medical attention. We receive the majority of our services within a 10-mile radius. We have different needs, struggles, and concerns that rural areas in Mojave County and La Paz County, or other highly populated urban central Phoenix areas. Also, Maricopa County does not share anything in common with Arizona's surrounding counties, and those boundaries should never be intertwined. Please draw our maps with close proximity to where we live, work, and play. I believe this is very important, and it's important that the, follow the Arizona Constitution should be Commission's only focus instead of seeking party competitiveness like they have in the past. We want fair representation. It's entirely, that's what we would like. Thank you for hearing me, and good luck in your decisions.
Our next five speakers are Mary G., Amber Hilliker, Corinne Haynes, Nathan, and his last name starts with an M, Mary Louise Stevens.
Hello, my name is Amber Hilliker. I'm a wife and a mother of two. My husband works for Maricopa County. I'm an independent agent that helps people with sustainable tax for retirement, and I can work anywhere in the state of Arizona. My children attend a private school in Glendale. I do not like the direction the public schools have taken, so I've chosen a school that offers good curriculum. We live off of 75th Avenue and Cactus in Peoria. I don't remember the new district number, but it's been 21 for the last 10 years. Senator Gray is my senator. My church, and I liked what you had to say, Senator, my church that I attend is in Glendale. My school that my children attend are in Glendale. Our children have played sports with the Peoria City Sports and Christ Church of the Valley sports teams. Currently, our daughter is participating in cross-country with her school. All my children's sports teams have either been in Peoria or Glendale. And when I mention Glendale, I'm speaking of Glendale north of Northern Avenue. We typically support businesses off of 83rd Avenue, south of Bell Road. Sometimes we support businesses at West Gate in Glendale. We go occasionally to Abendale, but we typically stay around their home, and we never travel south of the I-10 to support businesses. The I-10, south of the I-10 is high in crime, and it's extremely different than the part of town that I live in. I would like to see that the boundaries of Congressional District 8, Sun City, Surprise, Peoria are kept together. I believe the eastern bounder, boundary, like everybody else, should end around I-17. And when we're speaking about the legislative district, again, I think Sun City, Peoria should be kept in the same district, and the eastern bound should end about 67th Avenue. The lines that were drawn about 10 years ago were not equal in population. Some districts had upwards of 10% and more or more in populations than other districts. Districts should accurately represent communities of interest. I think you've heard that. So I want to thank you for your time today, listening to us.
Hi, my name is Nate Mess, 85387. Can you hear me? My name is Nate Mess. I live in 85387. I live in an, I agree with much of what's been said here today, but a little bit of a different perspective, okay? I live in an unincorporated area of Maricopa County, northwest of Surprise, and I work in northwest Phoenix, north-central Phoenix. I spend my free time working on my property. I do a lot of hunting and fishing, camping, hiking. I enjoy going to the mountains, but I also spend a lot of time in the desert around my home. My community is largely made up of service, health, and construction workers, as well as retired folks who enjoy the rural life. Many of us in the community have livestock, horses, chickens, and other interests. Most of us have boats, campers, motorhomes, off-road vehicles. We're able to pursue our interests because we keep these things right on our property. For instance, if I want to go fishing, I hook up the boat and I go. I don't have to go to a storage lot before and after the trip. The hour-long commute to where I work passes through many densely populated areas. When I see a lot of homelessness, bus lines, speed bumps, traffic lights, HOAs with their rules and regulations, and did I mention traffic lights? People are not permitted to have chickens or campers on their property even if they wanted to. People in my community choose to live where we do for the openness, the peacefulness, and the rural lifestyle, free from these restrictions. I'm asking you to respect that, and I'm asking for representation. I have a lot more in common with Wickenburg than I do. I agree that these lines need to be brought west. 28 and 9 are the ones I'm talking about. I hear a lot about competitive districts, but I only got halfway. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Corinne Haynes. I live in Maricopa County. I'm here today to give you information about my community of interest. I live off of El Mirage and Vistancia Boulevard, just north of the 303 and Happy Valley Road in Peoria. My community is made up of families and retirees. Because of the proximity of the 303, the 101, and the I-17, families can work close to home, but also have easy access to work in neighboring towns. My community offers many activities in which both families and retirees can interact and enhance our quality of life. In my community, we play together, we work together, we attend neighborhood churches, and our kids attend schools in like districts. Many Friday nights, families gather together at CCB where their children compete in sports events. On these evenings, we encounter all kinds of friends that we have grown up with, gone to school with, and share common values and goals. It's like living in a small town within a big city. We choose to live here because we share so much in common with those in our community, and it's important that we have representation who understands and shares our values. During the last redistricting, our community was literally split right down the middle. If you lived on one side of the street, you were in a different congressional district than the other side of the street. It was confusing and didn't make sense. The West Valley needs to be whole again. In the draft map, Congressional District 8 has been split, but there can be, it can be corrected simply by moving some of the boundary lines to the left or west, uniting Surprise, Sun City West, Sun City, Peoria, and Autumn Ridge into the same district. South Glendale and urban Glendale are totally different communities of interest and would be better served by being a part of Central Phoenix or CD 3, where they share similar interests. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to give input, and hopefully we can correct the mistakes made 10 years ago and making it fair for all Arizonans.
My name is Mary Louise Stevens. I live in Sun City. I lived in other parts of the county, and I can attest that each community, each area is very unique. I can't imagine that we have anything in common with the proposed extension into the west part of the state of Arizona. One of our big fears, I think I've picked up on, is that our representative in the new congressional district will not represent our interests. Perhaps the presumption is that that representative will be from the western part of the state. If we were successful and we had a representative elected from the eastern part, which would be our communities, then I would feel sorry for the people living in the western part of the state. They're in the same congressional district, and they wouldn't have informed representation simply based on the distance and how spread out, physically spread out, the communities are, much less to talk about the different interests. One of the gentlemen talked about, in Yavapai, talked about water being a huge issue. Well, I can see that our interests in water in our communities will be quite a bit different, and extremely important to us, just as they will be for the people living in the western part of the state that would now be in the same congressional district, and I don't believe that it serves anyone well. Thank you for your time.
Our next five speakers are Chad Moreland, Laura Basie, Barbara Schweson Schwishau, Chris Judd, Fleta Collins, and Mary Ziola.
Hello, my name is Chad Moreland. I live in LD 22 in Congressional District 8. I've been in Arizona and Glendale for just over six years, and I encompass what a lot of the communities are in those areas, and that I'm a former Air Force, so I have ties to Luke Air Force Base. I was a caregiver for my mom, and I brought her here, and she lived over in Sun City West, so it's important. And there's a lot of folks that I know that have ties to that area that would like to remain tied through their congressional district to that area. And I'm also a cybersecurity specialist, so, and as part of LD 22, my church, a lot of my coworkers live in the, what's going to be LD 28. And as the Taiwan Semiconductor community comes in, that's going to expand even more. And I believe that it's important that LD 22, instead of decreasing and being split into three different districts, that it remains a part of the northern part of that LD 28 below 303. Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Laura Basie, and I appreciate the opportunity to address you. 17 years ago next week, my husband and I came here to visit and ended up buying a house. We moved here from California, and we stayed with friends in Surprise and ended up moving into northern Peoria. All of our friends live in those areas and cross those boundaries, and the way the districts are being split up doesn't make sense to us. We came here to retire eventually, which will happen soon, and a lot of our friends are already retired. They live in Vistancia, they live in Surprise, they live in Sun City West, Sun City Grand, and we just see the value of the representation of one district in those areas. So I just wanted to let you know that we really are unhappy with having to split these up and would like to keep it the same. And so, and I also agree with Carol Ayotte, Eric Morgan, and Heather Morgan. I thought their points were very good, so thank you for the opportunity.
I agree with Eric and Mr. Van Sliet. Anyway, my name's Barbara Suiso-Johnson. I live in Maricopa County, Sun City West. I live on Heritage Drive near Grand Avenue and the 303 freeway. We are retired, older, fixed-income citizens interested in representation that recognizes our demographics and like interests and activities. I find it unfair to link us to values and interests that do not reflect our population-based values. It is much more just to have representation that reflects us as a community. I'm not a public speaker. I'm 68 years old, semi-retired registered nurse. I have just moved here from Washington State and own a home here in Sun City West. I share community values with Sun City, El Mirage, Sun City Grand, and my home in Sun City West. I am connected to areas like Luke Air Force Base. My zip code is 85375. The interests with residents of my community, we are retired, on a fixed income, church active, community active, and interested in a peaceful community. We are basically not commuters and have no bus, train, or commuter needs. We feel it is unfair to put our population with areas of interest in conflict with our values and lifestyle. We enjoy aquatic, golf, theater, dance, Eagles, and American Legion clubs, singing groups, and especially our church activities. We're independent in our thinking, evaluating each issue for its pros and cons. We prefer representation that understands our community needs. We ask to be best stratified with like population. As a community, we are not taxed on the school systems as our population is not school-involved. We do have close to 20 grandchildren involved in school systems from Washington State to Florida. We have definite values involving the management of our school system. Our free time includes churches, friendship golf, singing, theater, military connections through Eagles and American Legion club. It is best and most fair to not form disconnected, chaotic districts, but like-minded communities whose representatives support our value systems and independent thinking. My husband is Norwegian, and I'm very nervous, and I am Dutch. My parents lived through Hitler's atrocities. My country represents the hiding place of Man- Frank, my parents, and married aunts and uncles seared into my memory the atrocities at that time. I ask you to follow the six criteria. Know that competitiveness does not mean conflict. Add conflict. Adhere to population numbers, and do not link communities of conflicting values and lifestyles. Thank you.
My name is Mary Ziola, and I'm a retired citizen of Surprise, Arizona, living in a retirement community. I do most of my social and healthcare activities in Surprise, Arizona. I feel Surprise should be included with the common interests of Congressional District 8 with the Sun City, Sun City West, and Sun City Grand, and should be kept together. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Chris Judd. I live in Surprise. I serve on Surprise City Council, and I'd like to echo the comments made by Senator Rick Gray. I made some great points. Specifically, my concern is with the congressional district. City of Surprise is a very urban area. Northern and western Arizona is a very rural area, and we would not have very good representation if we had, if we had an elected official from Surprise trying to represent them, or them trying to represent us. So if you can, move CD 8 out to include Surprise. Thank you.
My name's Fleta Collins. I live in 85383. The address is Peoria, but it is up in Vistancia. That is an active adult community, family community. We live, work, shop, and surprise Peoria. We are more aligned with the Sun Cities, including Sun City Festival, which I'm moving to, so I don't want to leave my area, really. But it, I do not understand why we would be moved to someplace so far away to the west that I don't even know it exists. And whoever represents that area cannot possibly represent the people that live in Surprise, northern Peoria, northern Glendale, and the northern part of Peoria. So please just keep us together.
We're now going to take a five-minute break and give our transcriptionist a little rest, and we will continue back at 7:34 promptly.
Mm-hmm. Good. Yeah. I like it.
Quite a meeting.
Thank you.
My name is Fleta Collins. I live in 85383. The address is Peoria, but it is up in Vistancia. That is an active adult community, family community. We live, work, shop in Surprise, Peoria. We are more aligned with the Sun Cities, including Sun City Festival, which I'm moving to, so I don't want to leave my area, really. But I do not understand why we would be moved to someplace so far away to the west that I don't even know it exists. And whoever represents that area cannot possibly represent the people that live in Surprise, northern Peoria, northern Glendale, and the northern part of Peoria. So please just keep us together.
We're now going to take a five-minute break and give our transcriptionists a little rest and we will continue back at 7:34 promptly.
Mm-hmm. Good. Yeah. I like it.
Quite a meeting.
Thank you.
Our next five speakers are Eva Maleka, Ange Patterson, Greg Rucker, Larry Templeton, and Melissa Kramer.
Good evening. My name is Eva Valenska. I have been a resident of Maricopa County for over 30 years. I live in current Legislative District 22 and proposed LD 27 in Glendale. My neighborhood is made up of retirees as well as families with young children who attend schools in either Deer Valley or Peoria School Districts. My community of interest, east-west boundaries are 67th Avenue to 99th Avenue on both sides of Bell Road. North boundary is Lake Pleasant and Happy Valley Road to 75th Avenue where my kids go to school. We seldom travel below Thunderbird Road or east of 67th Avenue. I think that districts should be compact to accurately represent communities of interest and people who live and work there. I chose to live in my community because it was safe, clean, and included like-minded people who enjoy quiet family time, as well as quick access to local hospitals and shops. I think that western boundary of proposed LD 27 should move west to El Mirage Road as it will better unite Peoria and Sun City. It makes sense that the retirement communities should be in the same congressional district, CD Eight. We need to put north Glendale, Peoria, Surprise, Sun City West, Sun City Grand in the same district. The I-17 ideally should be the eastern boundary of proposed Congressional District Eight. And northern should be kept the southern border of District Eight as we do not have much in common with downtown Glendale. Thank you very much for your time.
Ange Patterson?
This is my first time testifying, so my name is Greg Rucker. I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community. In the Arrowhead Lakes community, I live in the north end of Glendale in the Arrowhead Lakes community.
Our next five speakers are Mary Ann Johnston, Barbara Wiley, Summer Baker, Mary Banks, and Gerard Johnson. Mary Ann?
Good evening, my name is Mary Ann Johnston. Not only do I live in Maricopa County, but both my husband and I were born and raised in Maricopa County. Sixty years, native. We have lived west of I-17, between Peoria and Cactus off of 31st Avenue since 2005. We spend several Saturday evenings a month supporting our friends' restaurant, attending car shows along 67th Avenue and Bell. Since we moved to the area in '05, we've always shopped at the Albertson's on 51st Avenue and Cactus, Sprouts at 51st and Peoria until they recently moved to 43rd and Thunderbird. Our interest in activities and shopping is primarily west and/or northwest of I-17, even though we're still hanging in there and trying to support the businesses around the now-deadened metro center. District should represent those who have chosen to live in a specific area based on the accessibility of their interest, and I do not belong in the Sunny Slope District, which is a densely populated area and caters to more of a Hispanic community. I've always been a part of the West Valley community, and I'd like to stay that way. Therefore, I feel LD2 needs to stay west from I-17 to 67th Avenue, and Congressional 8 should be I-17 west and to include Peoria and Surprise, and not east of I-17. Thank you for your time considering my concerns, and as you move to adhere to all six of the criteria laid out in the Constitution. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Barbara Wiley. I have lived in the Northwest Valley for 51 years. I'm on the Wesmac School Board and have been for seven or eight years. I belong to the Catholic Church in Sun City West, and most of my family and friends live in the Northwest Valley. On the Wesmac Board, I represent, it's a huge area that I represent. It goes from Wickenburg to Tonopah to Buckeye. So I get out into those communities, it's a fantastic program, it's great, and it is primarily in the West Valley. During the last redistricting, Vistancia Community was split right down the middle. If you lived on one side of the street, you were in a different congressional district than the other side of the street. This never made any sense. Congressional District 8 has been split, but this can be corrected by moving the boundary lines to the left or west to unite Surprise, Sun City West, Sun City, and Peoria into the same district. South Glendale and urban Glendale are totally different communities of interest, and would be better served by being a part of Central Phoenix CD3, where they have similar interests. The people I share my life with have the same values, morals, and interests. Please keep us together intact and compact. Thanks for what you're doing, and call me if I can help. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Mary Banks. I live in Surprise, I've lived there about six years. I've lived in Arizona about 27 years. I'm not gonna try to address legislative districts, but my concern is the Congressional District 9, and that's where I would be. And the concern is, what I agree with everybody has said about keeping the Northwest Valley together, but I have a little bit different solution. I appreciate that whatever you do is gonna make a lot of people mad. You're not gonna satisfy everybody, and you are constrained to keep the population of the congressional districts fairly equal. So you can't just add 200,000 people to CD8. You have to change something else. So you have two congressional districts in Arizona that are wildly uncompetitive, and they happen to, but, it's CD3 and CD9. So my suggestion would be that CD3 be extended up what is really the main artery of the whole Northwest Valley, US 60 Grand Avenue, and include those communities that really center on that avenue. I don't know if you can make it out to Wickenburg, but out that way, and then you give CD9 areas of CD3, which are south of I-10, which are more rural. Just for your consideration. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Summer Baker. I'm a PC in the current LD 26. I spoke last night, and I just wanted to reiterate what I had said. I want to stress the importance of compact geographic areas, areas of interest, and the respect to city and town boundaries, which are three of the six requirements this commission must follow when redrawing these districts. I live off of Baseline Road and Middle Avenue, and my community is made up of middle-class, single-family homes. We have many people that travel to Owatuki, South Tempe, and West Chandler for school and work. We share similar priorities, interests, and values amongst ourselves. We support local businesses, restaurants in those areas, and we hardly travel into North Tempe, the college area, or into Mesa for any activity. The city of Tempe is very different above and below the Broadway Road and east of West Surprise Road. Last time around, my community was grouped into an LD that had other parts of the metro area whose communities did not frequently participate in and are what I would consider on the other side of town. A large part of the previous district was the Salt River Indian Reservation, who mostly do their daily activities in parts of Mesa and southeast Scottsdale. Your current LD8 draft map version 10 has my community grouped in such a way again. I propose that specific, that that specific LD8 be broken up to best serve the points I stressed in the beginning. Include the reservation into LD9 and 10 draft map version 10, and include south of the US 60 into LD12 of the draft map version 10. I ask that you exclude the panhandle of the LD12 and draw the boundary at the Price 101 freeway. Furthermore, the district, sorry, the districts the previous commission drew were not compact, did not have equal population, and were too focused on competitiveness. I do not want this to happen to us again. Competitive districts should be considered as long as the other five requirements are prioritized first. Please follow the Arizona Constitution when you are redrawing the districts this time. Thank you for your time.
Yes. My name is Gerard Johnson, I'm a resident of Sun City West, and I'll admit, I'm a recent arrival in Arizona. I've only lived here as a permanent resident for three or four years. However, I lived in a state where there was terrific gerrymandering, and I thought I had left it behind. I am, and I'm not gonna take a stand one way or the other on gerrymandering. What I am concerned is that, the, what, it's a difficult task, it's very Solomon-esque that you have to do, but I do join with all my friends and neighbors here who oppose putting Congressional District 8 in Congressional District 9. I've lived here and visited here long enough to know that I have very little in common with the people in Lake Havasu. They're fine people, the same with the people in Quartzey and Yuma and all along the western border. However, as a community of interest, I think it's more important to keep the sun cities together with Surprise and the areas that are now currently in Congressional District 8. I support what Lynn Peters and others have said. Really, please don't join parts of Congressional District 8 with Congressional District 9. And I really do sincerely, I know it's difficult, but I really hope you do listen to us and take what we say to heart. I can't repeat everything that everybody else has said. I, I think I have time, or it's not clicking, somebody didn't turn it on. So, so what, I have how many seconds? Thank you for listening to me, I appreciate it.
Our next five speakers are Eva Maleka, Ange Patterson, Greg Rucker, Larry Templeton, and Melissa Kramer.
Good evening. My name is Eva Valenska. I have been a resident of Maricopa County for over 30 years. I live in current Legislative District 22 and proposed LD 27 in Glendale. My neighborhood is made up of retirees, as well as families with young children, who attend schools in either Deer Valley or Peoria school districts. My community of interest, east-west boundaries are 67th Avenue to 99th Avenue on both sides of Bell Road. North boundary is Lake Pleasant and Happy Valley Road to 75th Avenue where my kids go to school. We seldom travel below Thunderbird Road or east of 67th Avenue. I think that districts should be compact to accurately represent communities of interest and people who live and work there. I chose to live in my community because it was safe, clean, and included like-minded people who enjoy family, quiet family time, as well as quick access to local hospitals and shops. I think that western boundary of proposed LD 27 should move west to El Mirage Road, as it will better unite Peoria and Sun City. It makes sense that the retirement communities should be in the same congressional district, CD8. We need to put north Glendale, Peoria, Surprise, Sun City West, Sun City Grand in the same district. The I-17 ideally should be the eastern boundary of proposed Congressional District 8. And northern should be kept the southern border of District 8, as we do not have much in common with downtown Glendale. Thank you very much for your time.
This is my first time testifying, so my name is Greg Rucker. I live in the north end of Glendale, in the Arrowhead Lakes community, in the Beardsley precinct. My primary concern is the West Valley as a community. It is common to hear people speak in terms of the East Valley, Phoenix, or again, the West Valley. The grid maps had me and my neighbors in LD 28, and the latest versions appear to show us an LD 27. In either case, there is a single string of Phoenix precincts included along the eastern border of those legislative districts. In my humble opinion, LD 28 and LD 27 should be moved west or north, and those city of Phoenix precincts included with a Phoenix legislative district. Why? For example, the area below Bell Road west of 51st Avenue is entirely in the Peoria Unified School District. One of my neighbors, and we're north of there, but one of my neighbors, two houses down, runs the library in Zuni Hills Elementary of PUSD north of here on 107th Avenue. My neighbor, immediate neighbor in the same direction, it is administrator of another school in PUSD. I myself am soon to be assisting with a science program at Heritage Elementary again in PUSD. How I'd like to also caution that much of my neighborhood, as it's been described, can be described as a retirement community, and I'm getting there myself, so I should, that's an add-in. Talking about congressional districts, the church I attend is not far north of here. The church building is in the proposed congressional district that runs all the way to Lake Havasu City. The pastor lives in a proposed congressional district that runs into Phoenix. So would you please consider creating a compact congressional district that covers the West Valley as a community? Thank you.
Hello, I'm Larry Templeton. I live in Surprise. I used to live in the Chicago area where I worked before I came to Surprise. I do not want to be part of Phoenix. Please do not move our lines down toward Phoenix. Second, I'm retired now. I would like for retirement districts like Festival, Sun City, Sun City Grand, areas like that to be together. It makes sense. They should be as compact as they possibly can. Now, think of the map that tries to take us out to California. That, that's no good. We need to stay in Congressional District 8, and we need Legislative District 8 not to go south. Okay? Please do consider our areas of interest. Please consider the community we chose to live in and want to continue to live in. I do not want to live in Chicago. I don't want to have my representative from Phoenix. Okay? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melissa Carner. I live in Surprise, Arizona. I've lived in Surprise for 17 years. I have three children, which are all attending either high school or community college. One is attending Shadow Ridge in the Dyce Art School District, and the other is attending Estrela Community College in Avondale. Surprise has been an interconnected city with Sun City, El Mirage, Waddell, Sun City West, Sun City Grand. We all hold a common interest. We are a large part of the West Valley. We work together, drive together, shop together, live, and share similar values with other West Valley families. With that said, as I have reviewed the draft maps, I request District 9 be compacted to remove Lake Havasu, Peach Springs, Kingman, Colorado City. These cities are way too far west and north to have anything in common with our community. We need to have D9 much smaller and only include the cities I mentioned, West Valley of Maricopa County. Our district should be compact to accurately represent communities of interest who live and work together. For example, what common interest do we have with the city of Dolan Springs, or Peach Springs? Not a lot. I'm sure they're beautiful. These small-town communities function totally different than our interconnected West Valley cities of Maricopa County. In conclusion, please consider making these maps smaller, as to not break up like communities and add communities that are too far to have anything in common with like-minded communities. Thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Our last three speakers are Larry Thomas, Donald Madison, and Tom Berry.
Hi, I'm Larry Thomas. I've resided in Arizona since 2008. After taking a job with the Public Works Department in the city of Surprise in 2003, I moved to the West Valley. Later, I worked for the state and retired from public service in 2017. I want to speak about CD9. To create the new ninth congressional district, the draft map peels off part of highly urbanized metro Phoenix and dumps its residents to a far-flung geographic entity, and this has already been spoken of on several occasions. This sprawling CD9 encompasses vast deserts and rangelands, agricultural areas, Native American tribes, and hundreds of miles along the Colorado River. This contradicts the requirement for creating compact districts. The new district includes almost the entire Colorado River area from north to south, but it excludes the city of Yuma. The driving distance from Welton at the southernmost boundary of this district up to St. George, Utah, at the northern border, is approximately 400 miles, which is a seven-hour drive one way. Furthermore, the current analysis by the IRC shows new CD9 is outside of the competitiveness range, and they say it leans towards one political party. It would be more correct to say that the new CD9 is completely dominated by one party, and will remain so for the foreseeable future. Any candidate running on the ticket of the dominant party will have zero incentive to address the needs and desires of those Arizonans supporting a different party. As a registered independent, this total lack of political competitiveness is deeply unsettling.
My name is Don Madison. I'm not a native of Arizona. I was moved here in 1946 when I was three years old. I've lived in Maricopa County for approximately 60 years, sometimes in California in the military. I live currently in Surprise, in Sun City Grand. We've been there since 2004. I strongly believe that we need to maintain things as they have been, like many people have said tonight. I know you have a thankless task. It's very difficult to do this in a way that's gonna satisfy everyone, but I believe you should consider the fact that all of us that are retired, living on fixed incomes, live our little communities in a very compact and sort of nice way. So God bless you all, I hope you do well, and thank you for letting me speak.
Good evening, my name is Tom Berry, and I live in Trilogy, Vistancia, which is a 55-plus community that's been talked about a lot this evening. And I'm very glad to hear my neighbors and friends standing up and trying to give you the message about our retirement communities. I'm actually glad that I'm the last speaker, because I want to leave you with an analogy that you will probably remember, and I hope it helps you remember us. The retirement communities of Sun City Grand, Sun City, Sun City Festival, Sun City West, Vistancia, Cortabella, and so on, we're like a beehive. When the sun comes up, we leave the hive and go out into the community. When the sun goes down, we're back in the hive, and most of us should be there right now. Please, please, don't throw us out in the desert with the mosquitoes and the stagnant water. Please don't put us in the anthill with the red and black ants. Let them figure that out. And by all means, please don't put any of us in the bat cave, 'cause none of us will make it.
That was a great way to end a great meeting. So we want to thank you all for all of your testimony, participating in the process. We appreciate all of your comments and that you came out to provide us with your input. We remind you that you will be able to also, if you want to continue to put input, we have our website. You can, if you've received the documents, please go ahead and submit those online. We will be continuing to work for the next month or so. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.